Recording in progress.
I call this meeting of the Green Belt City Council to order. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Good evening. Ms. McKenney?
Here.
Ms. Poppy?
Here.
Ms. Poe?
Here.
Ms. Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Ms. Weaver?
Here.
Mayor Jordan?
I'm here.
Ms. Neesel?
Let's see, I heard a little feedback. So, please join us as we pause to think about Green Belt residents who may have passed away since the last council meeting. Please join us. Thank you very much. Counsel, as the face of our local government, we have the unique ability to foster a welcoming environment for all residents and defend those conditions regardless of the background, economic status, primary language, or neighborhood of those residents. We are a welcoming community where our goals, our goal is to ensure that everyone thrives, belongs, and prospers. Several of us, including Mayor Protim, Robert Goldberg-Strassler, and myself, have suggested that it would be meaningful to recite the Green Belt Community Pledge after the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'd like to propose that we do that now, after the Pledge of Allegiance. Mayor Protim, will you lead us, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation. And then the strength of Green Belt is diverse people living together in a spirit of cooperation. We celebrate all people by sharing together. All are enriched. We strive to be a respectful, welcoming community that is open, accessible, safe, and fair.
Thank you. So, tonight, as always, it's a council meeting. We have these meetings two times a month, except for August and December. Mondays, several times a month, we set policy, we take formal actions. Our meetings are always open to the public, except for executive sessions as authorized by state laws, so that residents and others can observe council deliberations. We do strive to provide reasonable opportunities for the public to voice opinions on matters being considered, and we'll pause periodically for public comment. During these times, if you wish to make a comment or to address counsel, if you're in the room here, just raise your hand, and after being recognized, you can go over to the microphone. You'll need to state your name and where you live, more or less, we need that for the minutes. If you are on Zoom, you can use the Q&amp;A tab at the bottom of your screen to submit a written question, or you can raise your virtual hand. And, once again, after being recognized, you can, in stating your name, you can make a statement. And if you are watching on Facebook livestream, or on YouTube, or, of course, on cable TV, you can send us an email. The email address to use is questions@greenbeltmd.gov. So, with petitions and requests, please limit your remarks to five minutes and speak on one topic related to the question under consideration, and we ask that you avoid questioning the motives of others. As far as during the meeting itself, the time limit is three minutes, and we'll put a timer up on the screen, so that you'll be aware of the time. So, at this time, let's move to petitions and requests. So this is an opportunity to make a statement, to petition city government, and I see one hand up. Jay Davis, are you there? I'm so used to the scene of Zoom. Are you there, Jay?
In the flesh.
Jay Davis, Green Belt East. Tonight, I'd like to express a concern that I've had since the Green Belt Police Department signed a partnership agreement with the U.S. Marshal Department. ICE and the new federal administration has, or have, ramped up deportation raids in the past week, often without warrants. The head of ICE believes that ICE can enter not only workplaces or homes, but also says that he will go into schools and churches. He has stated that there will be, and has been, collateral detentions. Citizens that fit a profile, military veterans, Dreamers, and immigrants who have not committed a crime. Over half of those detained so far have been in this particular collateral item. He has also planned to call on the FBI, CIA, and the U.S. Marshals to help ICE in these roundups. My concern is that our partnership agreement will cause our police officers to be called up to do these raids in Green Belt, and this would be violating our policy that we've had for several years, that our police remain neutral and do not ask, and our city staff do not ask whether a person is illegal or undocumented. I know that has been said, that there will be a future meeting of council, probably an executive session, to talk about many of these concerns, and I would like you to add this concern to your discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Yes, please.
Good evening. Coach K from Franklin Park.
Good evening, Coach K. Could you speak into the microphone?
And from Green Belt. Piggybacking on Judith Davis, what she said, I had a lot of the members in the community worry about that exact thing that she was talking about with the police. I'm here tonight to let people know that I have information on the rights and what people should do, which I think that needs to be put out there for the people to know. I have access to the red cards in all languages, nine different languages. I only have two right now, but I can get whatever you need, and I'd like to have permission or have somewhere where we could get these out to the community. And I have also some numbers that you can call also. So I would like to get that out to the community and let anybody know, if there's any information that they need to know, they can contact me. I'll make my email and phone number available to anyone, but if you need these red cards, just get in contact with me.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You're welcome. If you want to leave a couple of copies with the city clerk, we can work with you on that. Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Schechter. I wasn't really prepared to speak, but I'm sure, like many of us, I've been very concerned to read these articles in the Green Belt News Review about these apartment complexes plus the one condominium that don't have heat. I gather things are more complicated with the condominium, but the apartments, you know, they're right here, and I don't know how much control we have over that. I gather that part of the issue is just sort of laws that seem to be granting landlords a little too much leniency, but I don't think we write those laws. I don't know if we can get involved with that in some way, but it would be great if at least, in the future, you know, the city could let the citizenry know kind of earlier, as soon as you find out, about a situation like this, because now people are kind of mobilizing, and they're giving donations and so on, and that's great, but you know, we've already had the terrible cold snap. It would have been really good to hear about this a little earlier, at least. So it'd be nice if there were some, yeah, I don't know, just some way of mobilizing more quickly the next time this happens. I hope it never does again, but just in case. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Orleans?
Mr. Orleans, President, I want to thank the city manager for reminding me before the meeting began that I have several outstanding requests. He was interested in knowing whether I received responses to them, and frankly, I could not remember when he asked me, just before the meeting was called to order, what they were, but I'm reminded by the minutes of the meeting in January of at least some of them. So I'll take the opportunity to say again that I'm still awaiting, under what authority, what statute, what enabling legislation allows for any municipality, but in this specific instance, the Green Belt City Council, to allocate the spending of taxpayers' money in closed session. That's one, Mr. Elmo. I've been asking that for many months, and I've had no response. I've had a verbal response from the mayor, who was presiding on several of those nights, that, of course, council is entitled, in closed session, to do certain things, but I don't think appropriating city revenues for any purpose is among them in closed session. So that's one. I would restate my requests, although it has been answered, but not to my satisfaction with regard to a meeting, a work session, two years ago with the manager of Franklin Park, when she was expressing concern with increased homeless population frequenting Franklin Park. This, of course, was at the time, very early in COVID, when there were evictions that were proceeding at a somewhat quicker pace than they should have been, and the question was posed to her that night, since she indicated that they had done a study, if that study was available, and I have suggested many times that it's of the interest to the city itself, and specifically the Community Planning and Development Department, to see a copy of that study, to know, in fact, what might be the cause of increased numbers of homeless in any part of the city. As I indicated to the city manager before this meeting was called to order, I'll work on remembering some of my other requests. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. We have a petition online. I believe it's Cynthia Newcomer. Cynthia, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. I just want to speak about the perilous times we're in right now with the new presidential administration taking action that threatens Green Belt residents, and I was glad to hear your opening statements, Mr. Mayor, and reading the Community Pledge, because a lot of these actions threaten our, you know, the words of our Community Pledge and our Judd Eye commitment. And it's already taken a lot of toll on people's mental and physical well-being, particularly for those of us in groups that are being specifically targeted. So now's a really important time to put the words of our pledge into action. So as we all know, and as several people have spoken to already, one of the first groups being targeted are immigrants, specifically undocumented people, asylum seekers, and refugees. I've been glad to hear, kind of through the grapevine, that the city is taking or exploring steps to keep our immigrant neighbors informed and safe, and I echo Coach K about the importance of getting information out. So I urge the city to communicate over various channels and share information about immigrant rights, how to stay safe. Any of those particular concerns for families where they have mixed immigration status, this could result in children being left behind if their parents are yanked away suddenly, you know, in the workplace, or... There's a few other things the city can be doing, and there are probably going to be many more things that we're going to need to do as the, you know, full scope of the administration's plans are revealed. But as Jay Davis raised, police cooperation with ICE is an issue. I know we have general orders against that, but I think we need to strengthen it into a municipal ordinance, or a trust act, which I know has been passed by some cities. I think there's another issue of how does the city monitor noncooperation if there are officers who seek to cooperate with ICE on their own, kind of, you know, behind the scenes. There's, you know, also the question of how we're going to respond to the Justice Department, because this is now much more of an imperative, and prosecution has been threatened against cities whose, you know, police departments do not cooperate. I think another thing that we could do is take a really strong stand in support of diversity, equity, and inclusion. College Park recently issued a proclamation about committing to be an inclusive community, and I think, you know, that's another thing. And I also just urge all of us in the room who are community members, now's a really important time for us to work together, to care for each other, and help meet each other's need as, you know, they continue to emerge in this new administration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other petitions or requests? I'm not seeing any other online. Hearing none, let's move to the next item on the agenda, which is actually the consent agenda. Are there modifications to the consent agenda? Yes, Mayor Protim?
Yes, I'd like to move to, I'd like to take the February 26, 2024 meeting minutes off the agenda. I just need to make a quick correction that can be done verbally, and then we can approve them.
Okay. Thank you. That would come up as item number, what's that, six? Five?
No, it's eight. Yeah, I just...
Okay. Okay, could I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
I move. Okay, I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Measure carries. And that's going to bring us to the agenda. Any modifications to the agenda?
Yes. Yeah, I would like to add an item. I know we read the Community Pledge this evening, but I would like to add an item to regularly, at every regular meeting, read the Community Pledge after the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. Okay, all in favor of that amendment to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and so could I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
I moved.
Second, I'll second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That measure carries. The agenda has been approved. That's going to bring us to the presentation section of the agenda, and I'm going to begin with a proclamation for Black American History Month. Since 1976, every American president has designated February as Black History Month and endorsed a specific theme. The 2025 Black History Month theme focuses on African-Americans in labor. Members of the Green Belt Black American History Committee are present here to accept the proclamation. I'd like to welcome you to come forward.
Coming out in force tonight. Good to see you all.
Good evening.
Nice to see you all. I'll begin. Whereas Black American History Month is observed in February of each year, it affords a special opportunity to become more knowledgeable about the heritage of Black Americans and to honor Black Americans who have contributed to the progress of our nation. And whereas during Black History Month, Black American History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by Black Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History founded by Cargill Woodson in 2015 selects a theme each year for the Observation of Black History Month. And whereas this year, the 2025 theme is African-Americans in Labor, which focuses on the various and profound ways that work of all kinds intersect in the collective experiences of Black Americans. And whereas the Green Belt Black American History and Culture Committee observes the honors and honors Black American History Month and encourages educators, students, and families to learn about the heritage and achievements of Black Americans through programs, activities. And whereas the strength of Green Belt is diverse people living together in a spirit of cooperation, celebrates all people by sharing together. All are enriched. Now, therefore, I am at the Jordan by the powers vested in me by the residents and the city council of Green Belt hereby proclaim the month of February 2025 as Black American History Month in the city of Green Belt, and urge all residents to join in the celebration by participating in the wide variety of events held in Green Belt and throughout the metropolitan Washington, D.C. area. So congratulations. I'd like to present this to you. If you'd like to kind of stand this way, the city manager, who's a... Counsel, do you want to stand up as well?
I'm not sure we could all get it.
All right. Hey, thank you so much. Hey, if you'd like to go to the podium and talk about some of the activities, there's a lot of things coming up this month in Green Belt and all throughout the area.
Good evening. I'm Lois Rizzato, and I think it's important for you all to know the people that are on the Green Belt Black History and Culture Committee. We have Bina, who's new, Lisa, Peggy Kleazy, Robert Goldberg-Strassler, Jennifer Dudley, Joe Parks is VP of the committee. I'm Lois Rizzato. We have, we are fortunate in that we have many organizations in Green Belt that are celebrating Black American History Month and have developed different programs, and we're going to start with a citywide exhibition on Sunday, the 2nd, as well as Artful Afternoon. And Artful Afternoon is wonderful, because what Nicole DeWalt has done is create a luminous collage inspired by the work of Aaron Douglas, who really founded the Harlem Arts Guild, and there's going to be a reception at the New Deal Cafe at 1:00. So there's a lot of activities for Sunday, and you'll have the art exhibit, and you'll have Artful Afternoon. Now, Artful Afternoon is also going to take place the following Sunday at 1:00 p.m. in Franklin Park, so Spring Hill Lake Recreation. And while Just Another Bombing has been seen multiple times, Hyattsville has requested a showing of Just Another Bombing with our own neighbor, Iona King, and that will be done on the 10th. I think that the Golden Age Club is presenting Dr. Carol Gibbs. Many of you know Dr. Carol Gibbs. He has presented at the library often, and he's going to talk about the migrations from the South to the West that most people are not aware of. Most people think everybody went north, but a lot of African-Americans actually migrated to the West. And we're really excited about Saturday, the 15th, because we have Kamau Siddiqui, who is a diver for the Smithsonian, and is doing the Archaeological Slave Wrecks Project. He actually finds wrecked slave ships where enslaved people were on those ships, and they do a whole ceremony around that, and he's going to explain that whole piece with everyone. Finally got the news, the Peace and Justice Coalition. So again, another recognized group in Green Belt, and this is the story of the League of Revolutionary Black Workers in Detroit's auto factory in 1969. And Bill Fletcher, a prominent African-American labor activist, will lead the post film discussions. And, and then our own Green Belt Museum is going to do a virtual program, the WPA Original Gardens Lecture, and also stories about the Black American women that actually planted the gardens and the new project of the Garden of Tomorrow. And Ladies of Freed, female reenactors of distinction, they will be doing a tea on February 21st at the Community Center, so we invite people to please try and attend. It's at 2:00 p.m. Piece by Piece is a family film, and is it a Lego story of Pharrell Williams, and that's going to be shown free at our own Green Belt Cinema at 1:00 p.m. And also, we will have transportation coming from Franklin Park. So our own Recreation Department has arranged that, and we're very grateful to them. And the last performance will be done by the Green Belt Orchestra, and they will feature works by composers from the African diaspora, Joseph Malone, who was the Chevalier de Saint-Joseph, Samuel Coleridge Taylor, Quinn Mason, and Florence Price. And that's going to be at 3:00 p.m. Sunday, February 23rd, at the Green Belt Community Center. So we're grateful that we have so much richness in terms of organizations and people willing to contribute and participate in our monthly, February monthly celebrations. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. That's quite a lineup. There's some other programs going, I mean, there's a lot of programs in Laurel, Montpelier Mansion, I believe, is having a special exhibition, and I just got an email from Courtland Jones, who is, he's an author, and he's actually doing a program also on the 22nd at the Green Belt Library, just celebrating Black First, trailblazers and Black leaderships. There's just a ton of great programs, so you can kind of pick and choose what fits your schedule and your interests. So it's exciting to be able to...
I wish you had written me, we would have stuck it in here, too.
I just got it today. Well, thank you, Dr. Rizzato, and thank you to all the members of the committee. You're doing a great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And special thanks to the Recreation Department.
We have a question?
I don't know. It's unclear to me, Dr. Rizzato, from reading tonight's agenda, who actually designated the theme for this year as African-Americans in Labor? Was it Green Belt African-American?
It's a national organization. That's correct.
The Green Belt Committee, as well as the National Committee, for adopting the theme African-Americans in Labor, it provides an opportunity for some to consider that the labor movement, along with African-American liberation movements and other ethnic liberation movements, have been the focus of progressive change in the United States of America since its inception. And given that, I'd like to remind council that it has had on its to-do list...
Thank you, thank you. We're going to move on.
...the opportunity to amend the charter, recognizing...
Mr. Orleans, please, this is not a debate or a discussion, so we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, if you don't mind.
It's pertinent to the theme of this year's recognition and celebration...
Please, can we move on, sir? Thank you. Ms. Poe?
I just, I wanted, I wanted to thank everyone. I wanted to thank everyone, and I wanted to thank Dr. Rizzato as well. I just watched a movie, The Six Triple Eight. What an excellent movie. They're showing it, yeah, and I'm not sure if I'm going to be, we're going to have, we might have a meeting, so, but I just watched it over last weekend at home, and, yeah, and I just, I just wanted, I just wanted to encourage everyone to see this movie, because it is, it's very, I mean, it really moved me a lot, and I was getting very angry, disgeneral in that movie.
Microphone, 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 microphone.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Do you want to repeat that since?
Yes, it's going to be on Wednesday, February 12, 6:30 to 9:30, and I think they also have someone, they have a retiree who's going to be answering questions, or you can have a discussion afterwards. So I don't know if I'm going to make it, but I did watch the movie, and I would everyone encourage to go and see this movie.
Well, thank you so much. Hey, at this time, I'm going to pause for a moment, take a point of personal privilege to invite Robert Goldberg-Strassler to the podium. He asked for a moment to address council and to address the public. Please, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. My name is Robert Goldberg-Strassler. My Hebrew name is Yerachmi Obasala Benyosef Alevi. This is along with the proclamations. Today is January 27th. It is International Holocaust Remembrance Day. It commemorates the victims of the Holocaust, which resulted in the genocide of one-third of Jewish people, along with countless members of other minorities by Nazi Germany... of other minorities by Nazi Germany between 1933 and 1945, in an attempt to implement its final solution to the Jewish question, who is a Jew? January 27th was chosen to commemorate the day when the Auschwitz death camp was liberated by the Red Army in 1945. It is also where my grandparents were exterminated 80 years ago. The essence of the UN resolution lies in its twofold approach. One that deals with the memory and remembrance of those who were massacred during the Holocaust, and the other with educating future generations of its horrors. The International Day in Memory of the Victims of the Holocaust is such a day on which we must reassert our commitment to human rights. We must also go beyond remembrance and make sure that new generations know this history. I lost the whole thing in printing. Oh, my gosh. I was gonna read the poem by Pastor Martin Niemoller, "First They Came for the Socialists." Then they came, and I wasn't one of them. Then they came for the Unionists. I was a Unionist. Then they came for the Jews. I wasn't a Jew. When they came for me, there was nobody there. I'm gonna ask, I'm going to do now the Kaddish, the Mornish Kaddish, which is the Hebrew prayer for those who have perished. If you wish to stand, that would be nice. Have you got the poem? Okay. Yisqedal, yisqedash, shmei rabbo, yom ha'adivot, yidur sey, biyamlik ma'fusay. Ha'chayeh chonu, biyome chonu, ha'yei dekol bese Israel, ba'agolo, v'zman kari, biyemru, amay. Yehish mei rabban avorak, yom hamayah. Yisht barak, yisht tabak, yisht ha'av, yisht ha'man, yisht ha'sey. Yisht hadav, yisht alev, yisht halash, shmei dekushav, riku. Yehelamin, ha'ber gorkosav, yisht shirasa, tush bekosav, v'nachamasav, damiram, biyoma, biyemru, amay. Yehish lama rabbo min shema ya. Ha'chayim, olenu, biyalko yisrael, biyemru, amay. Oseh lama b'mama, hu yaseh lama, olenu, biyalko yisrael, biyemru, amay. Yeah, she can pull it up. Okay. Thank you, Judy. Okay, this was the poem by Pastor Martin Niemoller. "First They Came for the Communists," actually, "the Socialists, and I did not speak out. Then they came for, because I was not a Communist. Then they came for the Socialists, and I did not speak out, because I was not a Socialist. Then they came for the Trade Unionists, and I did not speak out, because I was not a Trade Unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out, because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak out for me." I think it's very apropos, based on some of the statements made by Jay Davis, et cetera, that these are important times. And I request that the City Council heartily support the state legislation looking to protect those who are in peril these days. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. That's gonna bring us to the next section of the agenda, which is a statement of the record for closed sessions.
First, the minutes, right?
Minutes, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm reading.
Yeah, so the correction, I just would like to correct that in the minutes for the February 26th, 2024 meeting, it indicates I was absent at a previous closed session on February 12th. I was actually present at that meeting. I was absent for the February 26th meeting, but I was present for the previous closed session, and that's noted incorrectly in the minute. So I just want to make that correction.
Okay, thank you very much. So let's, would you like to make a?
Yeah, so I move, I move to approve the minutes with that correction.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Pompey has seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The measure carries. Thank you very much. So at this time, let's go to item number eight A, which is a statement of the record.
Let me get that pulled up. In accordance with the General Provisions Article, Section 3-06(c)(2) of the Annotated Code of the Public General Laws of Maryland, I move that the minutes of tonight's meeting reflect that Council met in closed session on Wednesday, December 11th, 2024, at 9:02 PM in the Council chambers. Council held this closed meeting in accordance with Section 3-305(b)(1) of the General Provisions Article of the Annotated Code of the Public General Laws of Maryland, one to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction, or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. The purpose of this meeting was to discuss the city manager's evaluation. Voting to close the session, Ms. Niesel, yes. Ms. McKinney, yes. Ms. Pompey, yes. Ms. Pope, yes. Mr. Roberts, no. Ms. Weaver, yes. Mayor Jordan, yes. The following staff members were in attendance, Jose Salmarone from 9:40, and Dwayne Martinez, Director of Human Resources, from 9:28. Other members in attendance were Ada Wunmi Lewis, a consultant with MGT, virtual from 9:35. Council took the following actions, decided on a bonus for the city manager's performance.
Hey, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, actually, a roll call vote, please.
Oh, yeah, we have to do that.
Ms. McKinney?
Yes.
Ms. Pompey?
Yes.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Niesel?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And now for eight B.
In accordance with the General Provisions Article, Section 3-06(c)(2) of the Annotated Code of the Public General Laws of Maryland, I move that the minutes of tonight's meeting reflect that Council met in closed session on Wednesday, December 18th, 2024, at 9:50 PM in the Council chambers. Council held this closed meeting in accordance with Section 3-305(b)(1) of the General Provisions Article of the Annotated Code of the Public General Laws of Maryland, one to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction, or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. The purpose of this meeting was to discuss a merit increase based on the city manager's performance evaluation. Voting to close the session, Ms. Niesel, yes. Ms. McKinney, yes. Ms. Pompey, yes. Ms. Pope, yes. Mr. Roberts, no. Ms. Weaver, yes. Mayor Jordan, yes. The following staff members were in attendance, Jose Salmarone, City Manager, from 10:36, and Dwayne Martinez, Director of Human Resources, from 10:36. Other individuals in attendance, Ada Wunmi Lewis, Consultant with MGT, virtually from 10:36. Council took the following actions, a determinate salary increase and bonus for the city manager based on his performance evaluation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. McKinney?
Yes.
Ms. Pompey?
Yes.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Niesel?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, and now eight C.
In accordance, in accordance with the General Provisions Article, Section 3-06(c)(2) of the Annotated Code of the Public General Laws of Maryland, I move that the minutes of tonight's meeting reflect that Council met in closed session on Monday, January 6th, 2025, at 6:39 PM, virtually via Zoom. Council held this closed meeting in accordance with Section 3-305(b)(9) and 10 of the General Provisions Article of the Annotated Code of the Public General Laws of Maryland, one to conduct collective bargaining negotiations or consider matters that relate to the negotiations, and two, to discuss public security if the public body determines that public discussion would constitute a risk to the public or to public security, including, one, the deployment of fire and police services and staff, and two, the development and implementation of emergency plans. The purpose of this meeting was to discuss the status of the collective bargaining agreement negotiation and get updates on the fire department staffing situations. Voting to close the session, Ms. Niesel, yes. Ms. McKinney, absent. Ms. Pompey, yes. Ms. Pope, absent. Mr. Roberts, no. Ms. Weaver, yes. Mayor Jordan, yes. And I would note that Ms. McKinney was present for the meeting but absent for the vote. The following staff members and others were in attendance, Jose Salmarone, City Manager, Bertha Gaiman, City Treasurer, until 7:13; Tim White, Deputy Chief of Police, until 7:13; Stephen Silvestri and Blaine Taylor from Jackson Lewis Law Firm, until 7:15. No, Council took no actions during this session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hey, Councilmember Niesel has seconded. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Yes. Pompey?
Yes.
Ms. Pope?
I abstain. I was.
Ms. Niesel?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Well, thank you very much. So at this time, let us move to administrative reports. City Manager Salmarone, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. Welcome, audience. I have a report, but I would like to start off with addressing some of the public comments that were made during tonight, sorry, the petitions and requests regarding the deportation, ICE activities, and other matters associated to public safety. We are working on a series of things to inform the public about their rights and what level of protections they have in our schools, in our places of worship, and just broader community. So last week, we issued a Know Your Rights information and created a landing page to direct residents for information regarding what our local community, that includes our local government and the schools, are doing to ensure that folks understand their rights and have access to resources to protect themselves and their families and their friends. So we've created the landing page, have distributed the information via our digital channels. So we sent emails out to 14,000 email subscribers on our email list, just to get the information out as quickly as possible. We are working on a series of things to create the resources. So we'll be meeting with Casa Merilang to organize Know Your Rights information sessions. We want to be discreet about those sessions. We do plan that there'll be public events, but we do not expect to advertise a town hall and attract a large gathering. We would prefer to work in sponsor groups to ensure that we are being sensitive to the concerns and security needs of our residents and visitors of surrounding community. So we, I expect to finalize some dates this week around those information sessions. And Coach K, I appreciate what you're doing with the food distributions and your contacts in your community and the cards that you've secured and distributed. So all that is welcome. I appreciate the community support in these initiatives. If there, if you have, I'll take any questions you may have on that matter. Otherwise, I can move on with the rest of my report.
Let's keep moving.
I have a question. You know, the Know Your Rights cards that the coach is speaking of, they're pretty easy to obtain, and it might be a good idea to have those available at our food distribution events, and maybe even to have them available in our cares office here, where we see clients, and maybe even just have a stack of them at like Spring Hill Lake Community Center and the Community Center here, just so when people come in, the information is just there. If they want to take it, they can take it. They don't want to take it, they don't have to take it. And just, just so it's there for them, because those are spaces where people in the city regularly. And there may be other places that I'm not thinking of as well, that you probably will think of, that it would be good to have them, so.
Thank you, Ms. Pompey. I spoke with Liz today, and we have the downloaded versions, and we may have printed those. So we have that version. We don't have the red ones that Coach K, but we will secure a set of those cards and have them available for distribution.
I just think having the information, particularly in areas where we know we have large, a high population of immigrants would be great.
Okay, I'll start off with exciting news. I know at least one council member's been waiting for some news on our animal control, spay and neuter program. We have secured a $9,000 grant to help our residents with the spay and neuter program. That's currently for our, for our pets, not the full-blown program that you had wished and requested for, but some, it's progress in the right direction. So we are providing financial assistance for that spay and neuter in service.
Can you share that with her as well in an email?
Yes, I will. I will. And we'll create some advertising around it. It is first come, first served, and 9,000 goes pretty quickly.
Yeah, well, yeah, but I don't think we're gonna have a rush. So it's, you know, like, but I think that's, that's a good amount to get started. And especially if we find someone that does, you know, something with production and price or service. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Other announcements on animal control, we have started to back opening up our animal shelter, animal control services, and we expect to be in full operations February 3rd. So that's underway. This week, a lot of emphasis or focus around budget. We are working on putting together the 2026 budget. So it's gonna require a lot of work. We have submitted the bond bill request for $500,000 for the repair, replacement of the community elevators. So that submission's been made. We expect to hear later this year on, on that project. We are also anticipating setting aside some capital funds to repair. One, I don't want to say too loud, because the Senator delegates may be listening, and we need all the funding we can get.
Got lots of elevators. Lots of old elevators.
Yes, we have multiple elevators, right. So we'll be, we look forward to hearing some good news, and we'll budget some of that expense in 2026. A lot of ARPA projects underway. We've allocated all the funding and continue to work to make sure that the projects are getting off the ground as planned. The Armory Projects moved along well, and so are the Safe Street Projects. The Business and Economic Development, we had a great, there was a wonderful soft opening of the Caribbean Restaurant this weekend, well attended. I understand many of you council members were there enjoying the food. I made it for the dinner crowd. It's a very welcome addition to, to our food options in Rosebelt Center. Great food. We are scheduling a more formal opening later in the, in the spring. So that will, that will take place. We are looking at addressing recycling issues throughout the city. The city does not have an ordinance requiring recycling in the city. We are relying on the county's ordinance on recycling. This creates a barrier for enforcement for recycling services in the city, as we are not actively enforcing county regulations. We let the county take care of their regulations. But Council may consider doing our own local ordinance requiring recycling in the city, and that will give us enforcement authority within our corporate limits. So something to put on your radar, and we'll continue to explore that. We had a wonderful Greenbelt Business Alliance Awards Center. It was well attended, especially for our first annual event. It was very well attended. Exciting to see so many businesses doing so well in our community. The, we have, at Council's request, last council meeting, we requested a town hall on utility services. We have scheduled that town hall with utility service provider, and that's scheduled for February 20th. So that'll be town hall format with utility providers. And finally, I will, I'm happy to report that Catholic University nursing students have began their rotation with us. In Greenwich House, we have six students that have started the rotation. So we welcome their services to our community. In addition, CARES delivered a presentation on tutoring services at Duval, where there were 120 students in attendance. Sorry, 120 participants. I'll take your questions on anything else on the report.
I did want to ask for a quick update on the status of, you know, the heat in the apartment developments in Greenbelt, and if you would care to comment on what we've done outside of the city of Greenbelt, over at Chelsea Woods, you're welcome to.
Sure. I'll start off with our properties. In the news, in the Greenbelt news, there's a good write-up about timeline and what incidents have occurred with heating. So we have cited Parkway Apartments and Crescent Point Apartments, and we expect to escalate those fines until an acceptable solution is delivered for those residents. We had the building inspected, multiple buildings inspected today, specifically looking at the boilers. And we found that that two boilers are repairable, and the property management has committed to repairing those units, because they're repairable. Those are Buildings 38 at Crescent Point and Building, and Building 2, which supplies heat to Buildings 2, 4, and 6 on Parkway Gardens. Those boiler units are repairable, and we expect that they will be repaired. The boiler unit at Building 22 that supplies heat is Building 16, 18, 20, 22, Parkway Gardens, which are 24 units, that is unfortunately unrepairable and will require complete removal and replacement. So we'll, we'll keep track of that. And it is, it is, it is a challenge, but we'll stay on top of it.
Yeah, thank you for the update. So much concern, rightfully so. It's been incredibly cold, and, you know, we have to hold our multifamily property unit owners responsible for livable conditions. So, you know, this has been out there for a while. So I think it's more than appropriate that we are finding and escalating the fines until a solution is in place as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll add that I'm sure. I'll add that I'm sure the residents in those four buildings that I just mentioned are twenty-four units. And I, this is not the way I would like to deliver news to twenty-four residents in a public meeting because it's significant work. It's not going to be an overnight fix. So to the residents in those units, I apologize that you're enduring these circumstances and that you're hearing about your boiler units and your heat in this format. But it is the reality we're facing. We'll do our best to support the property manager to get those repairs done swiftly as possible, while also ensuring that they are meeting the requirements of the law to protect public safety of our residents.
Thank you very much. Ms. Pompey, you got your hand up first.
Yeah, are they regularly communicating with residents about this? About the status of repairs?
We have requested that property management do that. We, it's shared with us that they're communicating with the residents. We have no way of validating that. But we have provided language to council and to our court enforcement and staff on what information to provide so that the residents are informed about our efforts and any timeline information that we have.
Okay, I also have a question about the recycling, but I'll hold that because I think Ms. Pope has a question about the current topic.
I just want to, so two can be repaired, but you said one, the one boiler in the unit has to be totally taken out and what has the owner, did he say yes? Did they agree to this proceed, you know, that this needs to be done? Or what is their stance on that?
What the requirement, sorry, what the law allows us to do is enforce their obligation to provide heat. They try to resolve the issue by providing the window units. The challenge with the window units is that the electrical panels cannot support all the load. Had the electrical panels been able to support the load, then a permanent heating solution would have been available to the residents, and it wouldn't be an issue. So the obligation for the property owner is that they must provide a permanent source of heating, whether that's through the window units or the boiler system. So they do have options. It's what's the option that is going to be a sustainable and acceptable solution? So the boiler, we determine that that issue, that the boiler, it's not repairable, so they have to replace it. So they choose to proceed with using a boiler system to be their primary source of heating. They have to replace that. Otherwise, the alternative would be to do electrical panel upgrades to ensure that those window units can, that the electrical panel can support the electrical load of those window units. Yeah.
Timeline that they must, and is there, do we have any enforcement on the timeline? Like, how long does this owner have to get these repairs done?
So we can't force them to have the repair by X date. What we have enforcement authority is through our fines and continue to escalate those fines. And that's a punitive process. So I think that that bill run is increasing, correct. It was a lengthy, lengthy response to your question whether we can require them to replace the boilers. We can, but we can require the heat source.
I talked to somebody today that lives there, so, you know, that's very unfortunate.
Mr. Roberts has a question on the same topic.
Well, I was going to ask you, you know, about whether the management thought that those window units were going to fix their problem, you know, that they wouldn't be required to do the boiler. But in my opinion, those window units, regardless of how much power they have, even if they can power them, they are not sufficient to heat those units. And not only they're not sufficient, but that's going to be a heck of a burden on the people that live there because that's going to be a huge, because they're going to have to foot the electric bill. As it is now with the boiler, the management is paying for the heat. Well, if they, if we allow them to use those little tiny heat pump things, that's going to be probably about three hundred dollars a month increase in the cost of living in that apartment. And not only that, like I say, it's not capable of heating that place with those little things. You know, that's just ridiculous. I think we need to get that out of our mind and insist that the boilers be repaired in those buildings. Because otherwise, we're just shifting the burden onto the residents where it should be on to the owners of that building. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the update. I know that you and code enforcement is on top of this, and you're working tirelessly to try and bring a conclusion to this episode. So it's good to hear that the fines are being made, they're being escalated, and working as, working with the management to make sure that this gets fixed. So I'm not going to speculate on what to do, but, you know.
We're working on it, and I appreciate the feedback we're getting from Citizen. Earlier today, we had Ms. Elizabeth here asking, or pleading that these things shouldn't happen. We've been at this since November, and I think council is aware that we are solution-oriented, that we care about the issues being fixed. And while we have very broad authority from council to levy the fines right away, we cared about fixing the issues as fast as possible. And obviously, we will exercise our authority to find when we see things moving slower or not at the pace that we think they should be moving through. And I would have liked to have seen this resolved much sooner, and we exercised our authority and did the citations and then escalated to the fines. And now we're doubling the fines every ten days.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Pompey.
Yeah, on the recycling issue, I do think we need our own local ordinance so that we can enforce recycling here in the city. And the other issue with that, related to that, is the recycling facility over by Buddy Attic. And it seems like things had gotten better over there with the dumping, but as soon as the camera was gone, the dumping got worse again. So I just think we need to discuss a more permanent solution in that area because I think temporarily having a camera there was great for that time, but as soon as the camera's gone, the problem is back. So I just think at some point, we need to figure out what are we going to do? Like, is it time for us to put up gates there? I mean, we have to do something.
One of the things we're exploring is the permanent camera, mounted cameras. And Mr. Kim raised the idea that from a cost-effective perspective that we could resolve that issue by a permanent camera installation. I think somebody might have tagged one of those air tags on that trailer because they just know when it's not there. Brilliant, chief, ignore that.
Is there a three-second delay somewhere?
We'll edit that part of the video out.
Great, well, thank you. I'm glad to hear that you guys are thinking about solutions to that problem.
Yes, and actually, one of the things we're looking at solid waste is we will be scheduling a solid waste discussion, a work session with council. One, our solid waste fees and model hasn't been reviewed in a long time. And we want to, our residents expect better and more services from us. And, you know, the rate has been fixed for ten years. And we have introduced composting into our program offering, and we want to make sure that it's sustainable. And to make it sustainable, we need to review our service model or fees, and we'll have that discussion with council ahead of the budget session. In that process, we're also going to be evaluating the delivery of services so we can create some efficiencies in our operation and also reduce some of the wear and tear on our vehicles and how we deliver services. For example, we do daily pickup along with our trash pickup. So if there's a piece of furniture that's left out with the trash, then it gets thrown into a truck, and that has led to damage to our compactor on the trucks. And we think switching the bulk pickup model would allow us to better serve our residents by being able to pick up larger items with one team and not having to throw it on our garbage truck, and we can have a more dedicated, more appropriate vehicle. It does create some change in the service model because some of our residents are used to just putting out whatever they got to go out that day of their service, and they just put it out. So it does require a little more planning for all of us. But I think that long-term, that better planning will allow us to deliver a better service at a more effective cost.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Nissel.
I had a question or a comment, I guess, about the Animal Control Division. I know that we have really incredible dedicated officers, and we have also had some really hard turnover because of the demands of the job. And I was wondering if perhaps the same way that we have what can be recycled, what can't be recycled, we could have a fact sheet that would really clearly delineated what can our small trailer animal shelter do and what do we need to call on county facilities for? I want, I would like that, if that is the will of the Animal Control Officers, as a way to protect them against public perception that they can do more than they are equipped to do. And then I was also realizing that I never got my dog registered. Right, gosh, the police aren't here, right? I found it really, really difficult to get my dog registered, and apparently, a lot of other people do too because there are only seventeen permits for a Green Belt residence and then three of non-Green Belt. My first stumbling block was even getting the permit through the county because at that point, College Park was changing their offices. But even something as simple as this is the link to the office where you can get the PG County permit, this is the link, and then it can automatically go to Animal Control. It doesn't require an email or a separate phone call. Just some simple steps we can take to streamline things so that those aren't additional calls they're getting.
That's excellent feedback. You know, I'm quick to judge the county on their permitting process and how bureaucratic it is, and maybe we can lead by example of streamlining our animal registration. So I'll look into that.
Mr. Tim.
Well, I just, I think, I wonder if that's something as we're working on revising the website and getting some more functionality on the website, or even, I think we were talking the other day about an app to go with the website as we develop that. Maybe that's a way that you could just register your dog through a Green Belt City app and take care of it that way. That would be really nice. I think the easier we can make it for people, the more people we will have complying with those rules.
Yeah, you, that's what I said. You were talking about the dog park registration.
Oh, correct, yes. I'm sorry, dog park registration.
I think you have to register your dog with the county, but here, you just need to register for the dog park and provide your documentation that your dog is vaccinated, et cetera.
Yes, but it's still, it's still even a printout on our form.
It could be a lot easier. Yeah, I agree with you.
Hey, I have a quick comment about the red cards and the information that we're going to be disseminating. I think it's important to consider the entire population of Greenbelt, and we have a substantial West African population, you know, spread throughout the city. I attended a meeting of mayors of smaller municipalities, and one of the cities reported out that they have a language access point of contact in their city. And it's a designation for someone, and any resident can go to that person and ask to have any city materials translated into their language. I think that's a really good idea, be simple to do. So I want to suggest that idea, but also in these materials, we need to think about providing translations into a few other languages possibly.
I believe the card's available in seven languages.
Seven languages?
Nine languages, sorry, nine languages.
That language access point of contact, it's a good idea. Just so if someone has any material from the red department or anywhere and need a translation, they go to that person. The person makes it happen. A council member, McKinney.
Yes, I would also thank you for saying that about some of our other languages as well, if we can have that. I also know that we had, in this area, a large Afghan refugee population that came in as well in there in our schools. But then also with some of these legislations and policies coming out, there also could be an impact to our veterans as well. And so there may be an opportunity to give some resources and some points of contact to veterans that may be kind of in flux right now as some of the executive orders are going through and obviously going through the court system. So I just wanted to make sure that we were recognizing that there's a large population of people in our community that will be impacted. Our African residents and many others.
Thank you very much. I think we need to move on to keep moving. We've got a lot to cover. I'm going to actually propose that we special order the item number thirteen, the legislative session updates next on the agenda. But before we do that, we have to vote. Would anyone like to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So we've got Daryl Carrington with us, who is our legislative liaison. He's working with the city manager, city staff, and with council to highlight, identify and highlight bills coming up with the state that would be of interest to the city of Greenbelt. So we are fortunate, and we've got a tradition of being very, very active in the state of Maryland on legislative issues. I personally serve on the Maryland Municipal League Legislative Committee, and Councilmember Pompey is the co-chair of the PG CMA Legislative Committee. So with this packet of materials that was available to the public and to council, there are four different handouts. One is a listing of PG CMA priorities. There's a listing of bills that the Maryland Municipal League is currently tracking. And there is, then we've got Mr. Carrington's list of priority bills, other bills with hearings coming up. So, Mr. Carrington, I want to welcome you today. It's so nice of you to be here with us, as opposed to being in Annapolis where you usually are.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. For the record, Daryl Carrington, Carrington and Associates LLC. We're pleased to be here with you this evening to talk about the beginning of the legislative session. Every week, you will be getting a weekly bill tracking report. Currently, you have eighty-five bills on that report, including cross-filed bills. We will cut them for you as we're progressing through the session, as we know where bills are moving, what your postures are, so that, you know, so that this list doesn't become unwieldy for you.
So you mentioned cross-filed bills. So just to be really clear about the process, the initial deadline for filing bills was last week.
No, actually, the deadline for filing bills for the Senate is going to be February third.
February third, next week.
The House is going to be February seventh. And that's because in odd years, the House has the budget first, and then even years, the Senate gets the budget first. So giving them a little bit more time to get their bills in.
Okay, so each bill is filed in a committee, and if it gets enough support, it goes to the House or the Senate as a whole. And these bills have to be cross-filled in both Senate and the House in order to move forward.
They do not have to be cross-filed, but what that does is it gives the, it gives the bill sponsors another bite at the apple, so to speak. So that if a bill does it, let's say a bill doesn't make crossover from one chamber into the next, perhaps it did in the other chamber so that they can move that bill forward. Crossover is a big deal in Annapolis. Crossover is going to be sometime in March, and that's the date in which if a bill doesn't move from one chamber to the next, it's not guaranteed a hearing. Now, just because it's guaranteed a hearing doesn't mean that bill's necessarily going to move. However, if a bill doesn't make crossover, its prospects for that year is really, really difficult. Unless it's a leadership priority, I would imagine that that bill may not be moving anywhere.
So we're talking about with these statewide bills on the one hand, and on the other hand, on the state level, there are some bills that are just focused on Prince George's County or Montgomery County, Bay County bills.
We have what we call local delegation bills. And so those bills are also identified. I try to take down all of the bills from Prince George's County State delegation that may affect us locally. We have some that are related to schools. We have some that are related to speed monitoring systems. We have, you know, others that, the one that's really important to us, the two. We have the one for the statewide bill for Magland. And then you have, you have some local bills that we, you know, we're highlighting because we want you to pay close attention to them. And in addition to that, as the mayor mentioned, and we appreciate your leadership well with MML, we have the admissions and amusement tax. That's really important to our local municipalities in terms of revenue generation. And of course, everyone knows the three-hundred-pound grill in the room being our budget deficit. We have close to a three-billion-dollar budget deficit. The governor announced his budget two weeks ago now, in which he proposed two billion dollars in cuts, which means there's still another billion dollars in cuts that the General Assembly is going to try to find. It's going to be, it's going to be a tough year for everyone. We met, I heard the city manager talking about our bond bill request. In other years, some of our senators would get allocations of over a million dollars. I believe this year, they're only getting an allocation of about four hundred thousand dollars. So that, you know, that shows you the huge cut that we're going to be seeing in the capital bond initiative process. Some other key bills for Some other key bills for.
Before we go there, so with, with the Maryland Municipal League, you, you mentioned, so there's two priority bills. One has to do with speed cameras and allowing administrative personnel to, to testify and review these cameras as opposed to having a sworn officer do that, which is really a burden. It, it means that one of our sworn officers is off the street and instead looking at videos of, of speed camera violations, not just any kind of video. So that's one. And the other one has to do with local ordinance. It, it's enabling legislation that would allow a municipality such as Green Belt to levy a food or a beverage fee. It's a state bill, Senate Bill 324. So those are the two PG, uh, two MML priority bills.
And also I do know that we're interested in Delegate Marvin Holmes's local bill to allow for municipalities of a certain size to have zoning authority. So that bill, that bill is moving its way through the delegation. We don't know what the prospects of it are going to be. The delegate had the bill two years ago. It didn't get out of the delegation, but it did have a hearing at the county and it drew considerable amount of attention. We will be, you know, we will continue to work with Delegate Holmes on his bill and try to see if we can advance it through the, the House delegation this year. And at this time, I mean, I'd be more than happy to take questions from any of the members on any of the bills that we hear. And any, any research you would like us to do on any particular subjects that may not have been covered.
Okay. Yeah.
One thing is the, so the speed camera legislation testimony or letters for that are due by Wednesday of this week. So if the city wants to write a letter and support, we should do that soon. And then the other question I have is about Senate Bill thirty-five, which came up during my cog meeting. And just to sort of summarize that, to read the summary here, that requires an individual appointed or employed by a municipality in a role with certain financial oversight responsibilities, satisfy certain educational requirements and have a certain amount of experience, requiring a municipality to establish a certain continuing education requirements for certain individuals appointed or employed by the municipality and requiring the legislative auditor to include a certain annual report information on municipal compliance with the act. And this would be for like treasurers, accountants, those kinds of employees here.
Yes, we've been in contact with Senator S. Office with respect to the bill and, and its origins. And the, we, we don't know the prospects for this particular bill at this particular point in time. But certainly municipalities would be concerned because this would limit the amount of people who would be eligible to, to fill these, you know, to fill these spots. And it will be really difficult for smaller communities, especially smaller municipalities, because it's, it's really tough for them to get people to serve on commissions, boards and the like. So I imagine that the city would probably like to offer a letter of opposition to this particular bill.
I mean, I think we should. If, if this bill begins, continues moving forward, I think that we need to keep an eye on that.
I'd draft that for, for your consideration. I'll send it to the city manager and assistant city manager and you guys can get it on your letterhead.
And the reason just being because I think that our city and our city manager can decide what qualifications are necessary for our employees, that we don't need a state mandate to tell us who we should hire, how people should be acquired, be qualified for specific positions.
Yeah, the, the Municipal League is, is both strongly opposed to both of those bills and will be testifying and submitting quite a bit of support on those two bills, so. Are there unfunded mandates or something that, that always gets the thumbs down statewide?
And the last thing I would like to point out as well is that we still don't know what the effects are going to be of any changes to Medicaid. And that's going to also have an effect on our overall budgetary health. So we're still reviewing executive orders that are coming down and trying to figure out how that's going to affect us here, you know, especially, you know, here in the city of Green Belt. So stay tuned, stay in touch. We'll, we'll make sure that we're, you know, we're highlighting those things in your weekly reports.
The other bill I had a question about, if, if counsel will indulge me, is the, I, I don't have the bill number in front of me, but it was Delegate Barnes's bill having to do with annexation, municipal annexation. And we talked a little bit about this in our PG CMA meeting, but I think we need to. It, it is something that could potentially impact us. It has to do with annexing properties that don't have any residents on them.
Fewer than twenty.
Yeah, fewer than twenty residents. And it sets up some very, I, I don't have all of the bill in front of me, but it sets up some very specific parameters for that. And I think that it's just something we need to be knowledgeable about here and decide if that bill's moving forward, if we want to take a position on that as well.
I'll get you a brief, I'll, I'll write something up for you on that particular.
Appreciate it.
Oh, absolutely. My pleasure.
Yeah, and I, I think we, I'm, I'm trying to remember when it was. We already did a letter of support for the, the police one, I think. Didn't we also, which one was the one that has the hearing on Wednesday or the deadline is Wednesday?
That's, I think that's for MagLab.
No, the MagLab deadline was today.
Yeah, that one, yeah, we just submitted that one for.
No, but, but the, the one.
We did talk about it. I don't know if we submitted it.
Yeah, I'm just trying to be clear on, what was the one that you did? So I think we already had written something up about supporting the. Well, that one too, maybe. I don't know. It's hard to keep track of all of them, to be honest. No, but I thought we had already written a letter at last year in, in, in supportive of. Yes. So that one, it seems like, is one we, we definitely want to pursue again. And, and the other one that I think we supported last year that I think Green Aces is going to discuss tomorrow is the beverage, the beverage, the bottle bill, which I think may still be not, I don't know how likely that is to actually move forward. But I, and I don't know, this email related to, from, from Green Aces or, or to the Green Aces group, I don't think has a, a bill hearing deadline, but that is one that we voted to support last year. So that, that, that hearing may not have been set yet. It's the, it's, it's the container recycling refund and load reduction. So it's putting a deposit on beverage containers.
Do it in Europe all the time.
Yeah.
Works, works great.
And just to let you know, Madam Protem, I spoke with Ken Kerr. He's a delegate that sponsors the, the bill for civilian review of tickets. We believe maybe this might be the year, this bill's been around for about four years now. And I've actually worked on it in other years. Hopefully this year we, we get the, we get to go. We, we usually get stopped in the Senate. There's a, there's a couple of senators that are just really adamantly against these speed monitoring programs. And you would think that they would understand that this is a very, very good bill because as the mayor said, you shouldn't be using your police resources in this particular way, but someone can just sit there and say, yes, that's the image that I see there. Click, click, click.
I'm interested in finding out more about a couple of the bills that you've highlighted having to do with the consolidated transportation program. That would be HB twenty.
We have HB twenty, SB one ninety-eight. And then we have a second one, which is the major highway capacity expanding project, and that's HB eighty-four. So I want us to, you know, pay close attention to both of those. And I'm actually glad you're making, you're, you're in my memory about something. We have to also pay very close attention to the FBI relocation and the monies that have already been encumbered. So if you'll remember, we have eight hundred and forty-five million dollars that the federal government has already encumbered. And then another two hundred million dollars that the state of Maryland has set aside for road improvements, you know, things of that nature. So we want to make sure that we, we, you know, we keep our eye on the prize, so to speak, and, and make sure that in the case of any changes to the relocation plans, that Green Belt doesn't lose out on, you know, road improvements and the like that are going to still be necessary.
I, I like the way that you've presented this information. And for council, in looking at this list that Mr. Carrington, the, the bills that he's following, the ones that are in green are ones that have a hearing coming up. So those are ones that require our immediate attention or action. The ones in black do not necessarily have a hearing coming up short term, so we have a little bit more time to actually.
No, actually, the ones in black are ones that we think are going to probably not progress.
Not move at all, right.
We've gotten some intel that lets us know that it's not going to go anywhere this year. So when we find that out, we, you know, we want to let you know. And then any of our priority bills we'll put in, they're easy to identify.
Right, right. So the consolidated transportation plan is one thing that I'd like you to, more information on. Also, there was, there were two different bills that had to do with construction and around transit-oriented development sites around metro stations. So I'm also very interested in finding out more. One of them would allow for a local priority plan to, to be put forward.
That would be HB eighty, SB one ninety. That's the land used around, and that's on your list.
Councilmember McKinney.
Just a clarification then on your, thank you for putting together the tracking document. I'm assuming that the blue is just hyperlinks, but does the blue mean anything in the document?
No, the blue is all hyperlinks. You've got, you've got that.
Okay, thank you.
I, I think, I, I think I pointed this out the last time you gave us a table like this. I would just like to, to point out that red and green as a coloration is the only indication of what that means is not actually very accessible for people with colorblindness, with red-green colorblindness. So it's not, so better, a better practice for accessibility would be to indicate which ones are priority, which ones are coming up soon in some other way, like a text designation or something, that it's not best practice to use color as the only indication of some kind of information because then somebody who, who, or for example, somebody using a screen reader wouldn't be able to tell which ones are the priority bills and which ones are the, are the upcoming bill hearings. So I think we.
Do we have a member of our council that's your colorblind?
I'm a student, yeah.
No, I, I'm.
I've read green colorblind.
Well, but, but I think the thing is that this is a document that's being made accessible to the public. So if there's just an added column that says upcoming priority may not move, if you have it as information in a column, then it's accessible to screen readers and people who are colorblind. Whereas the color coding, that information isn't accessible to everybody. That's, yeah.
It's pretty easy to do, yeah.
No, no, I'm, I'm making up.
Yeah. Councilmember McKinney.
All right, just one other question, and I'm not sure if we spoke about this or not, but HB zero-two-nine-two, is that one that we're following? This is the one that's really.
Sorry, can you give me the bill type?
Sorry, yes, I know, there's so many. The Cooperative Housing Corporations, Condominians and Homeowners Associations, funding of reserve accounts and preparation. So in light of all the things that we're seeing with a lot of our condos and associations not being prepared for heating and things like that, I'm assuming this would be something that we would want to watch to ensure that these homeowners associations do have those proper reserves.
Absolutely. The bill hearing was last week. And what we'll do is we'll go back through and I'll, I'll make sure that I review the bill hearing itself to see if there was any opposition and the like. And that's another one of Delegate Holmes.
Delegate Holmes, yeah. I, I was actually talking with him about that a few days ago, so.
He's the kind of the guru on all things housing, you know.
Right. And one, one of the points that we are always sticklers about is making sure that the co-ops are included in any legislation multi-family apartments or condos, homeowners associations and cooperatives. So Jenny, I, I'm wondering, I, I know that we have been through PG CMA and then working with you, Mr. Carrington. There's a great interest in, in keeping a handle on what's going on with the county legislative session. They've just gone back into session recently. Do you have any updates or any information or is there anything that you'd like to point out?
Well, actually, I think there's only five bills that have been put in the hopper. None of them really are, are germane to any of our priorities right now. But we, we monitor that weekly as well.
So this is something that we, this discussion about legislative priorities and the progress of bills is something we'll be talking about at each council meeting for the next month or so, a little bit, the month of February. So the purpose of this item on the agenda was to give staff and to give you guidance about bills to follow and when we need to testify. We need as much hit time, hit, as much time ahead of time as we possibly can when we need to, to testify or submit.
Absolutely.
Are there, are there any of these that we need to vote on, to send a letter of support on tonight?
I, I'm not really hearing a lot of opposition or discussion around any of the bills. I mean, we can vote on, by acclamation on what we've discussed tonight if there's no opposition to the various bills that have been pointed out. Mr. Samron.
I, I have a recommendation that would be helpful to us. We, we, in looking at the MML priorities, the quadrant one are high scope, high impact areas. And I think that, that the municipalities at the MML, part of the MML Legislative Committee have endorsed these. I think it would be good, at, at least for, for the, for the staff, that it would be good to hear, get direction council on these quadrant one legislations as a group so that we can respond and start preparing draft documents if we need to in support of these bills. Because I, I think the MML Committee endorsing and supporting these bills, it's a good indication that perhaps we should too.
Yeah, the thing is, these are not necessarily endorsements. These are bills that MML is tracking and weighing in on. So a number of the bills are actually being actively opposed.
Yes.
Or no position.
Right.
Or, you know, support with a, with an amendment.
Yeah, so, so I'll clarify, our direction is to say that these are important and we, we should weigh in on these as a priority.
The committee meetings are on Wednesday, so this Wednesday I'll have an update and I can provide positions on each of these bills. But just as far as understanding and following this document, as you mentioned, the quadrants, the first one, legislation with a high scope and high impact. That means, you know, a lot, many of the municipalities would be affected and it'd be a big impact. The second quadrant is, are items where there's low scope. Not very many municipalities are actually affected, but there's still a high impact. The third quadrant is low scope, low impact, direct municipal impact, and there is no fourth quadrant.
Well, I think, I think you skipped maybe two.
Did I skip two? I skipped one. I skipped one. I'm sorry. But you get the idea. So I can provide information on Wednesday on the bills that are being opposed or supported with amendment, but, yeah.
I guess I, I, I think it's still not entirely clear to me which ones we actually want to make sure we send letters about and which one and, and/or testify at. So clearly MagLab, we are, yeah. Clearly the.
The speed camera.
Speed camera review.
The zoning authority. And also the food and beverage bill, which we've submitted testimony for Senate Bill three twenty-four.
And then I would add, like I said, I think we previously have supported the, the bottle bill.
The bottle bill.
So that's, that's five. I think it's just cleaner if we, if we, if we, if we vote on, on supporting. So I would, yes, I would like to move that we write letters of support and/or provide testimony for, and I don't have the bill numbers, but for the, the, the bill opposing the MagLab, the bill in support of civilian police department employees reviewing speed camera footage, the, the bill supporting zoning authority for municipalities, the, the bill supporting the food and beverage tax and the, and the bill for, that's what, is that the correct phrasing?
Levy.
Levy, but, and for, and for a bottle, the bottle bill, the. Now I've lost the right word for it. The, 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 the deposit, the deposit. So those, I, those five.
Okay, I, I would second that. That's a good start. We can have some additional discussion. Is there, are there any comments on the motion that's currently being? Mr. Robinson.
Are you going to break those down and vote one, one at a time on them, I assume?
No, I wasn't going to, but if there's one you'd like to remove.
Yeah, because I'm not in favor of having civilians tell people they have to pay a ticket.
It's civilian review of the speed camera footage.
Not in favor of that, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, we can vote on that one separately.
I'll vote against that.
We can divide, divide the motion if you like. Let's, so if there's.
Some of the other ones, I think maybe there's not quite time to really chime in on them.
Yeah.
Better to see, you know, how things are going, but I don't know.
So let's, let's divide the motion. Yes, Councilmember.
Just to clarify though, with the civilians reviewing the speed cameras, these are actual employees of the police department, right? So they're not. No, that's just, right, okay.
It's not, it's not the, no, it'd be, no, it'd be, it would be our civilian employees in, in the police department.
Yes, and clarify, there is, that's the clarification.
Clear to the public that we were not necessarily having any civilian, we were not in representing that we were for any civilian reviewing police camera footage. They are representatives and employees of the police department. So I just wanted to be clear about that.
Job would be to review the speed camera footage, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, they may have other jobs.
It's their job.
It depends. If you are a municipality that can't justify having a full-time person just doing review of tickets, then you want them doing something else. Otherwise, they're just be-
Yeah, that, that was not what I meant. I meant like, if, when it, when it, when we're talking about footage, like other types of footage, they would only be required to, to review the footage of the speed camera.
Speed cam.
Then of course have all the duties assigned to them, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the, the substance of the bill is to reduce the cost of maintaining a program because the labor cost of a non-law enforcement, a non-sworn officer is less. And you're also in a market where it's difficult to recruit and train law enforcement officers. You want them out doing law enforcement work as much as possible.
Which is on the street, yeah.
We talked about that before. I mean, this, this conversation has come up several times. I just wanted to make sure that, that, of course, besides going through the, the speed coverage, but they wouldn't be necessarily watching other-
No, no, that's not what's in the bill.
Other-
It actually is just an image that they're looking at.
Okay, okay.
Not, not-
Right. And of course, other assigned duties. I understand.
Okay, so let's separate the question and I'll actually make a motion that we support, send a letter of support and offer to testify on House Bill three forty-three and Senate Bill three ninety. Is there a second?
Which one is that?
That's the speed camera bill, bills.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Pompey has seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, six and one in opposition. And can you read, can you-
So the, the other four, so then the, the remaining ones are to provide testimony and/or, written testimony and/or in-person testimony for the anti-MAGLAF bill, the zoning authority for municipalities, the food and beverage levy, and the, the bottle bill, the, the, why do I keep forgetting that word? Is there another one you had, the, the, the deposit? Thank you. I should write that down, sorry.
Is there a second? Are you, okay, Ms. Councilmember Neesaw has seconded. Discussion, Mr. Roberts?
Is there any difference in the, the zoning bill from this year to last year? Is that the same bill?
I believe it is different.
This is the same bill that did nothing for us last year.
It's a similar bill. And it, there's no Senate co-sign, it hasn't been cross-fired in the Senate. Mr. Carrington, can you provide any additional information on changes from last year to this year? I know it is different.
Which particular bills?
I, I may, I may jump in on this.
The so-called municipal zoning bill.
I, the, the language, it should be the same as it was in two thousand twenty-one?
Thank you, I'll vote against that, thank you.
Okay, so you want to-
Because it's not, it's not helping us. It's not helping us at all.
We shouldn't divide that question or... You tried to make a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Just, I don't know, for the zoning-
Well, okay, so let's just do them all separately then. So I move that we send a letter and provide testimony for the anti-MAGLAF bill. Let's do that one first.
Second, okay. Ms. Pope has seconded. If there's no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, I move to, 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 to send a letter of support and potentially provide testimony for the zoning authority for municipalities bill.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion, further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, there's one vote in opposition?
Okay, and I move to, to send a letter of support and/or provide testimony, in-person testimony for the food and beverage levy.
I'll second that as well. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And, and I propose to send a letter of support and/or provide testimony, in-person testimony for the bottle bill deposit.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries as well. Let's see, there's a couple of comments. Please, Mr. Rand.
Does that include the presentation?
Uh, not quite, not quite. But, Mr. Rand, would you have a comment?
Hi, Bob Rand, Nineteen Ridge Road. So just to, to piggyback on the comments that came up under petitions and requests, I don't see any references here to forthcoming legislation to protect immigrant rights, specifically referring to CASA's Immigration Justice Package. So, and from my perspective, these bills could potentially affect our residents. They may not be numbered yet. And this is just coming from CASA's webpage. Protecting Sensitive Locations Act, Limiting ICE Access to Schools, Courthouses, Healthcare Facilities, Places of Worship, and Other Essential Spaces. The Maryland Data Privacy Act Blocks ICE from Obtaining Warrantless Access to State and Local Agency Databases. Ending two-eighty-seven G agreements with ICE that authorize local law enforcement to act as partners in immigration enforcement actions. Number four, ending corrections, transfers, and notifications. Prevents correctional officers from transferring individuals to ICE custody or notifying ICE of their release. Five, Good Cause, establishes guardrails around arbitrary evictions. Six, Right to Counsel and Eviction Prevention Programs, seeks to keep families in their homes. And then there's a, the seventh, Cumulative Impacts to Environmental Restoration and Community Health, requiring state agencies to continue, to consider the cumulative impact of new polluting facilities and projects that affect Black and Brown communities. So I also don't see any reference to, there's a Maryland Senate Joint Resolution on Diversity Equity and Inclusion, the American Dream SJ zero-zero-zero-three, sponsored by Senator Joanne Benson, and the Companion House Resolution was introduced by Delegate Ashanti Martinez. So I recommend the council would track these, these legislative efforts.
Can, can you email the-
Us a copy of what you have there. Well, thank you.
I can email that to the council.
Yeah, please. Manager as well, please.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Orleans, did you have a, a comment about the discussion on legislative priorities? I'll recognize you if you do.
My hand base for nearly the last hour is for an earlier item, not on this item.
Thank you. Mr. Carrington, you know, thank you for your good work. We'll be talking about these issues quite a bit. Some of the updates that you may provide will be very, very time-sensitive, so we may have to respond in between a council meeting in order to act or submit testimony on, on a bill that's moving that we don't necessarily want to, to move. So I want to make sure the council is aware of that. And that's just the way it goes.
And if there's something that really jumps out, I'll make sure that I alert the city manager and assistant manager so that we, we, we hop right on it.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, let's see, what is next? Can we special order item number fourteen? Or, I'm sorry, we've got the ethics provision.
Should we special order? Fourteen is the one that involves, I think, is, is that the one Mr. Kim is here for?
We've got a couple of people online. Mr. Shapiro for item number eleven. So perhaps we should just leave it as it is. So, councils will?
Yeah.
Okay. So at this time, we want to take a look at item number eleven, an ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter Two, Article Six, Article Four, excuse me, of the ethics provision of the Greenbelt City Code. Included in council's packet is an ordinance from the city council that will repeal and reenact Chapter Two, Article Four, titled Ethics Provisions of the City Code. This amendment updates the city's ethics laws to align with current state law. Ms. Weaver, you had introduced this for first reading at the January thirteenth council meeting. So the recommendation is that it be introduced for second reading and moved for adoption.
Yeah, so I would move for a second reading and adoption, an ordinance of the council of the city of Greenbelt to repeal and reenact Chapter Two, Article Four, Ethics Provisions of the City Code.
Okay, and is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, thank you. We have some discussion. I, I wish to actually make an amendment. And there's a copy of it on your desk. And so I think the city clerk has a copy, or I have a copy that I can put on the screen. But we talked about this in the work session. And the areas that, that I wanted to amend, page ten of the twenty-three-page document, it's section two dash one oh nine, section M. And in the general section M, I'd like to change the word may to shall. And I'd like to add a third bullet point for that section two slash one oh nine, section M. Add a number three, and that would read fines may be appealed in writing and waived by the city manager at the discretion of a simple majority vote of the city council. So we did talk about this in the work session, and when the motion was approved for first reading, there's no discussion at that time. So I wanted to put that forward for the consideration. Once again, that's on page ten of the twenty-three pages, and it's section two dash one oh nine, section M. Let's see if I can put that on the screen, if that would be helpful. Would that be helpful?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And Mr. Mayor, while you, while you're doing that, I'll, I'll just disclose that we've reached out to legal about the, the two proposed changes that you had shared with us. One was the may and the possibility of changing the, the fine amount. And the, our solicitor stated that both would not be substantive changes that will require going back to first read. So those could move forward for adoption. The third item that you just presented on the waiver, we did not have the opportunity to, to vet that. However, in looking at the, at the language, council already has discretion of waiving, not discretion, but has the authority of waiving fees that are allowed under the code. So I can't speak with legal authority whether that's substantive or not, but I think council already has that legal authority to waive fees. An example was, we, we did the tax lien against Charleston North, council had the authority to waive half of those fees.
Okay, and I, I did not, in my proposal, which I think I'm gonna put on the screen now, let's see if I can do that, did not propose altering the, the fees. But I did propose changing that word from may to shall, and also adding a bullet, item number three, fines may be appealed in writing and waived by the city manager at the discretion of a simple majority vote of the city council.
Mr. Mayor, the change is on page six of the twenty-three-page document, section two, one oh nine. Your proposed change.
Well, that's in the council packet, but in the PDF, the actual code. Is there any discussion on that, or shall I make a motion?
Well, I think you should make a motion and then we discuss it.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we amend the, amend the proposed ordinance with a change in section two dash one oh nine, section M, changing the word from may to shall. And in section two dash one oh nine, section M, adding a third bullet, reading fines may be appealed in writing and waived by the city manager at the discretion of a simple majority vote of the city council. Body want to second that? Discussion, Mr. Roberts?
Well, I think if you want to make those, both of those changes, you have to start back over and go back to the first reading because both of these, in my opinion, are substantive changes to it. May is a lot different than shall. And that, that is a big deal because we won the court over the Metro on that one time, may versus shall, and we won actually. But yeah, that's, I mean, it's not a big deal. You can start over, but that's what I think you gotta do if you want to go by the rules.
I'm okay with that. I don't know what Mr. Shapiro or anybody online would say. Yes, Councilmember Neesaw?
Well, if I heard the city manager correctly, he said that the first change had been vetted by our legal counsel and that the second had not. Is that correct?
Correct. We were, we were tasked with vetting two potential changes, one being the may to shall and changing the fee from five dollars to another amount.
Okay, so-
The, the third item has not. I think, I think I would feel a lot more comfortable if it either went back to first read or a third read.
I would, I would agree with changing may to shall since that has been approved. But given that the city manager has pointed out that council has the discretion to waive fines elsewhere and this hasn't been vetted by council, I would not approve that change at this time without going back to another reading.
I'm comfortable with that. And although council may have that authority, just saying that an appeal needs to be in writing, it shouldn't be verbal, it needs to be in writing. And it can be the city manager, council can vote on it. So it's just procedural thing. So what we could do, we could vote on that proposal, it would come back at the next meeting as a second reading. First reading or second reading?
First read.
Well, do we have?
You gotta do first read.
You can make the first reading tonight. Okay. Okay, yeah.
Well, I just have a question because this is, just because I think there was some confusion about this when we talked about it before. These are financial disclosure statements, that these, these fees and fines are financial disclosure statements for primarily employees of the city, correct? Employees of the city who don't turn in their, like, those who are required to turn in financial disclosures, which is not all of city employees. But is it, I mean, does this, this is not, does, who does this apply to, these, this, these fines? I guess that's a better way to phrase it.
It, it applies to the, to the employees, the council members. And this particular section applies to anyone required to submit a financial disclosure statement because it's specific to financial disclosure requirements under two-eleven and two, sorry, two-one-hundred-eleven and two-one-twelve of the article. And both of those articles define who must submit a financial disclosure. Part two of the, of the fee assessment is to, for filing, for requirements of filing a lobbyist registration and lobbyist report under the required section of two dash one thirteen. So it affects both financial disclosure forms as defined in, in two dash one hundred-eleven, two dash one hundred and twelve, and lobbyist registrations and reports under two, section two dash one thirteen.
Yeah, my, my intention is to simply have the supply to council and candidates.
Well, but candidates is an entirely separate thing.
I would just leave it for everyone. I mean, now you're kind of like, you know, picking a little bit, and I don't think that's right. If we put something like this, it's gonna comply to everybody that, that this applies to.
So section two dash one eleven is financial disclosures for elected officials, officials and employees. And two dash one twelve is for financial disclosure for appointed members of boards and commissions.
So if your intention is for this to apply to candidates, this is not the place to have that provision. This is about people who are, you know, council members who are already elected or the city employees who are subject to this or those things.
Well, you know, I certainly wanted to apply to council, sitting council, yes.
I mean, what is the process to take it, if, if, if we, if, to take it back to first reading?
We could simply vote on this amendment and it would go back to first reading at the next council. So that, that's what I propose that we do.
Make an amendment and say-
Well, I think just for the sake of clarity and getting, letting our legal counsel weigh in, I just, if we can just vote on the amendment and then bring it back for first reading at the next council meeting, that would, that would probably work pretty well.
Well, would it be bringing it, no, it makes this first reading. Bring, bring it back for another reading, but we don't go, have to go back to first reading. It makes this another first reading. So it still could be up for second reading at the next meeting.
Well, it could be. But what I'm proposing is that we vote on the amendment now, bring it up for first reading at the next council meeting, let our council weigh in on it if- on it, if our legal counsel weigh in on the question, if there are any additional reasons why we shouldn't go forward with this idea. I think that simplifies, Matt. I mean, we can sit here and talk about it.
Have one council member who wants more information.
But then it, then it has to come to two more readings.
Yeah, that's correct. This is not, this is not really a time-sensitive issue.
We are committed to getting, meeting the state's compliance requirement by October 1st, so we are within that timeframe. I concur with council member Weaver's assessment that this would be, would make it the first read. However, there is concern about bringing it back for a first read at a separate meeting. That is okay too, and I think if you did it that way, it eliminates any doubt whether you've.
And that's what I, that's what I would like to do, eliminate any doubt.
And it does allow folks to consider any, consider any significant impacts of the changes.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? I don't know if Mr. Shapiro or anybody from the Ethics Commission, I know they are.
Mr. Shapiro has his hand up.
Yes, Mr. Shapiro, are you there?
Thank you, yes.
Welcome.
No comments on that, but if you are bringing this up, I mentioned a couple of things I noticed to Ms. Lashley Mullen this afternoon. I don't know if she had a chance to put them in the version that you have in front of you, did she?
She did not, but I'm prepared to address both of the items that you brought up, Mr. Shapiro. One is the recommendation of striking section 2109H as is duplicate. I think that section G is more, more inclusive of all the considerations under that compliance requirement. And then the second item is for adding or affirmation to the section that reads "under oath," which is section 2109K1, where "under oath" adding or affirmation, which is the, I think, the expectation of where you see a clause to say someone will submit something under oath or affirmation. Is that I captured both of your items, Mr. Shapiro?
Yes, that is exactly right. These are not big things, I just noticed them going, going through it, and figured I might as well bring it up, as long as you're getting this vetted, hopefully, in a final form for yourselves, for the city.
And additionally, Mr. Mayor, the, both of these items are not substantive changes. One, striking section 2109, it's really a duplication of language that exists in a prior section. So it hasn't, it does not change the effect of the ordinance. The item number two, adding or affirmation, the adding or affirmation after oath already exists in the ordinance, so it just makes it consistent throughout the document where you're using the term "oath."
Okay, that makes sense. So what I'd like to do, I'd like to go ahead and vote on the languages, the language of this amendment. And then just wait and have it first reading at the next meeting, have it vetted, along with the non-substantive modifications that Mr. Shapiro just pointed out, since we've got until October, if its councils will. But I would like to vote on the thought, these two thoughts about changing the "may" to "shall." And just having the clause in there that if you want an appeal, all you have to do is ask for it in writing, the city manager at the discretion of council can vote to waive it. We've done that before, but I don't think it's codified.
So I'm confused by that language. How is it waived by the city manager at the discretion of the city council? So is it by submitting something in writing to the city manager, and then council has to vote on it? Or is it the city manager deciding at his or her discretion?
No, that's exactly it. It would need to be submitted to the city manager, and council would have to vote on it.
So then it's not being waived by the city manager?
Well, it would be waived, since the city manager has operational authority, it just has, it's at the discretion of council, council would have to vote on it, but the action would be taken by the manager.
I find that language confusing.
I think in how the mayor has written it, the executioner of the action authorized by council is the city manager. And that just states that the city manager, after having received approval by simple majority of council, can't waive this fee. I think we can eliminate the section where it says "waive by city manager." It could read that fines may be appealed in writing and waived at the discretion of a simple majority of city council.
Well, I'm fine with that. Let's vote on it, move on, have this come back at the next meeting, we have plenty of time.
Would you take that as a friendly amendment?
I will take that as a friendly amendment, yes. Okay. Discussion, is there anybody online that would like to make any additional points? Mr. Orleans, you have a comment?
I still have a comment from before, but on this matter, I share the confusion maybe of the mayor for Pam, although it's a different kind of confusion. What's projected says on page 23, section 3-109, section M. The pagination of what I have, that is on page 6. And I'm just curious, I mean, there may be people out there in Greenbelt who are watching this, or subsequently going to be reading this item, whether it should be voted out tonight or at the next reading, and get, be as confused as I am, not likely, but be somewhat confused themselves. So what's the story here?
Here's the story, I downloaded the PDF. Here's the story. I downloaded the PDF file that was attached to the agenda and looked through the pagination, and that indicated that it was in fact page 10 of 23.
And to clarify, the only section being modified by the mayor's recommendation here, or our amendment, is section 2-109. And so regardless of what page it is on one document or the other, the change is happening only to section 2109, section M.
Thank you.
Well, it would seem to me important that for people who are probably more familiar with what it would appear on a printed PDF, as opposed to what's printed in the agenda package for tonight, that they have a better understanding of precisely what item and on what page, since it says very clearly it's page 10, is being considered. That's just a general, that's a specific question about, because it sorts of my confusion. I have had a more general comment to make about the ethics ordinance itself, and I'll make it now. And that is that not every ethical question is a question of money, or other financial transactions. It's very much an ethical question of one member of, for one, any member of council, as to who they're listening to, as to how they vote on any given question. And I would like the ethics ordinance to address the importance of council, individual members of council, having the strength of character to define for themselves how they should vote on any given question, and not be persuaded by someone either of greater length in service on council or position on council. I have observed over the years that council as a group, with one general exception sometimes, votes as a body, regardless of whatever the question is, because that's what the body
I think we're coming up on the three-minute mark.
I would like to see included in this ethics ordinance.
Thank you.
A question of working type members of council, having nothing whatsoever
Thank you. Okay, so all in favor of this motion to amend the ethics ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, there's one in opposition. So this will come up for first reading, but it needs to be vetted with our attorney, and just smoothed out just a little bit.
If we're going to do it this way, I would like to formally move the changes by Mr. Shapiro, that Mr. Shapiro suggested as well. So I would like to move that we make the suggestions, removing the duplicative section H, I think it was, is that the right?
Correct.
And adding the "by affirmation" to the sworn, as suggested by Mr. Shapiro.
Section 2-109K1.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have a comment, council member, Jake Davis.
Jay Davis, former council member, just to be clear, Greenbelt East. I was not able to come to the work session on the ethics changes, the ethics ordinance. So I do have a question. And I did read through it, and I'm not sure I saw it anywhere, but it may be, and so I'm glad that Mr. Shapiro or the city manager can answer my question. After being on city council for 30 years, when I started, campaign donations were very small. It was just to your immediate friends and so forth and so on. But as years went by, I think most people have noticed, if they've ever checked the donation list, the amount of money that was collected by some candidates, not all, included donations from Greenbelt businesses, attorneys. And it was something that was never done. Now, it's, some candidates do it on a regular basis. And it's, it does increase the amount of money that they get, up to maybe $40,000 or $50,000. So is there anywhere in the ethics ordinance that states that, one, you, I think, when you have a candidate, that they have a financial disclosure, that they must report on their financial disclosure, any amount of donation that comes from a business or a business entity from Greenbelt or outside of Greenbelt? And whether that really is something that should be not allowed? Since it's sort of like having lobbyists pay you, and then you are sort of in debt to them to follow whatever their needs are? Or do we just ignore that and just say that's just the price of doing business and politics in Greenbelt? So is there an answer to that question?
I think it's a little murky when you have, and I'm not really familiar, having looked at campaign finance disclosure reports from folks in Greenbelt, I didn't really see anybody. You said something $40,000, $50,000, I didn't see that.
I mean, I may be incorrect on the total, but I know that there was one candidate and one council member, became council member, that had a very, very large donations. And he had, he had quite a pot of money to take with him when he left council. And I don't even know, and that was another thing that I had urged, and I don't know if it has been rectified by council, that when you leave council, something must be done with that money. Either there's a statement saying that you're keeping it open for future political campaigns, or that it has been paid off to a charity, or a non, a tax, well, a non-
Nonprofit.
Whatever.
Yeah, a tax exempt, and that is in the state law.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that in our ethics ordinance?
It's outside of the scope of the ethics ordinance.
It is in the state law, though.
It's outside of this. What you're talking about, campaign contributions, it's not part of the ethics ordinance.
And is that something that our Ethics Committee Commission checks on, to be sure that it has been taken care of?
I think that could be a referral from council to the Ethics Commission.
Okay. So let's take a comment, and let's move on, you know, there's a little more work to be done with this. Yes, please, Mayor.
Yeah, well, and that's what I was going to say, is I think that belongs more in the campaign and the Board of Elections, perhaps, more than the Ethics Commission, because I think the Board of Elections is the one that has usually shepherded those rules about, about how campaigns are run, which I think would include campaign finance. So it seems like that is something that we should perhaps refer to the Board of Elections to check where that is in our elections law, rather than in this ethics ordinance. But, but I think that would be a good thing to refer to the Board of Elections. I don't know if we formally need to vote to refer that to the Board of Elections, but I think that would be, I think that would be the more appropriate place to review it.
And perhaps also the disclosure of business donations would be underneath the campaign financial disclosure as well.
You have to do that, you have to list that, that's already in there.
Have to disclose anyone and wherever you get your money from. And I, and I really, I think, you know, I think it's up to each candidate themselves what, how to decide who to take money from, right? I mean, some of us do not take money from, from businesses or, you know, but, but I think that's, that's up to anyone, I mean, to themselves, you know, that's their own.
It just points to a conflict of interest.
Well, it may, it may guys.
If some candidates do, then they should be recusing themselves when there's a vote on a permit or a vote about a grant that goes to that business or whatever.
And I, and I agree with that, right?
But I don't think that's anywhere that's-
But I, I think that one incident-
I appreciate, I appreciate the comment and the thought. We really have to kind of move on, so it's to be continued, so if you'd like to write that out, but we hear you, we'll make a referral, let's move on tonight.
Well, and I guess, I don't know if this is the way to do it, but I will formally withdraw my motion for a second reading and adoption, to return it to first reading next time.
Okay.
And whoever seconded that, that's, hopefully that's acceptable, I forgot who seconded.
That's acceptable, I think I seconded. All right, let's move on, item number 13, 14.
Point of clarification, sorry.
Yes, please.
Do you want me to send the referral over to the Board of Elections?
Yes. If we need to vote on that, then I move that we refer the questions about business, business campaign finance law, including business, business contributions, as well as the, what happens to the money at the, after, after the council member leaves council. But I think it, but I think it should be in our ordinances as well. So I would like to refer that to the Board of Elections.
Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Not at this time, because I think this came out of nowhere, and we're just trying to-
It's a separate referral.
So I-
We're just asking the Board of Elections to look into it.
That's okay, I understand what you're doing, I understand that you're asking.
Thank you so much. So item number 11, these two items are intertwined, number 12 and number 14. So I think we should actually take item number 14 first, because item number 12 has to do with the funding for the pool, is that correct?
Correct, so we will need to do the appropriations legislation first, because we can't expend money we don't currently are authorized to spend.
Well, the, item number 12 is an ordinance to make a supplemental appropriation in the capital projects fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, in the amount of $1,665,000 for additional capital projects fund expenditures over the FY 2025 appropriated amount. So this is a ordinance for first reading, and possibly for suspension of the rules, first reading suspension of the rules, and for second reading and possible adoption. So enclosed in council's packet is an ordinance addressing the urgent need for the structural repairs to the indoor pool deck at the Greenbelt Aquatic and Fitness Center, and the estimated cost for these repair, repairs, including engineering services, totals approximately $1,665,000. So I know Mr. Kim is here, and you are here as well, so do you want to, do you want to set this up, please?
I'm not sure, do, do you want to move? Yes.
Would you like to make the motion now?
I can, I'm also going to add in the thousand that's missing there. I move, so we need to do, so this is for first reading and suspension of the rules of an ordinance to make a supplemental appropriation in the capital projects fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, in the amount of $1,665,000 for additional capital projects fund expenditures over the fiscal year 2025 appropriated amount.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Sonnen.
So first reading and suspension of the rules, so we have to vote on, do we discuss it now? Discuss on suspension of the rules, and introduce it for second reading, and then we have discussion. Okay.
Okay. Is there any, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. McKenney, Ms. Poppy, Ms. Pope, Ms. Neesel, Mr. Roberts, Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Okay, so I move for second reading and adoption, an ordinance to make a supplemental appropriation in the capital projects fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, in the amount of $1,665,000 for the, for additional capital projects fund exposures over the fiscal year 2025 appropriated amount.
Second.
Thank you.
How we discuss.
Okay, Mr. Sonnen, please.
Thank you. We talked about this several times, initially council had set aside money from ARPA, ARPA funds to pay for the pool repairs. We were facing demand pressures on the limited ARPA funds we had left, and given the size of this project being $1.6 million, we changed strategy and pursued program open space funding for this project. We were successful, we have secured $1.5 million for the repairs, and the difference of $165,000 is to be covered per requirements of program open space with general fund money. of program open space with general fund money. This ordinance essentially allows us to appropriate the funding to our capital projects funds as a transfer from, from the rainy day fund as outlined by our treasurer. Now, the fund, the money is there for us to be able to have the expense. We will get reimbursed. The team is strategizing around how quickly we will get reimbursed and how much cash we will essentially be using up before we get reimbursed. This is going to overlap over two fiscal years because the pool projects should council approve, and we're able to meet all of our target around permitting and securing equipment, materials. We expect to begin construction in April and end in September. So just physically, that overlaps two fiscal years. The way the reimbursements are gonna work is we, there's a state process that we have to incur the expense and then submit it to the state for reimbursement. That money comes back to us. We're gonna try to keep that, that cash outlet as low as possible. So we don't, we're not spending a significant amount of cash all at once. And we have a good schedule of submitting our reimbursements. In total, the net effect of the pool repairs to the general fund is going to be an amount of one hundred and sixty-five thousand, up to that amount. You will see later that the two contracts do not total the entire one point six sixty-five, and that's because we've allowed for some room for the cost of permitting and other issues. Now, some of that is anticipated, but there's a certain amount that we don't know what the total cost will be. And so we got enough room built into the budget to accommodate for those permit fees and additional cost. And I'll take your questions. You may have.
Yeah, I have a question. So with the budgeted amount this year and the rainy day fund, which was a reserved portion of the reserve fund that was set up, how, the percentage of the operating budget that's in that reserve fund, this, how much will, will this expenditure reduce that percentage? And is it below the threshold that's designated for that fund?
Based on, when you look at when the project is done, we're only gonna expect it to spend one hundred and sixty-five thousand of general fund money. So that's, we're essentially borrowing it from the rainy day fund to put the one point five million back into the fund. So from a depletion perspective, cash, total net cash expenditures for the city is gonna be one hundred and sixty-five thousand.
So the project, though, would actually span this year, starting in April, and then it would stretch into the next fiscal year. So you're budgeting for this, and what I'm driving at is we really need to maintain the integrity of that rainy day fund. So you're assuring us that this is not going to impact the percentage?
This would not dip us below our required cash reserves. Just in, just in twenty twenty-four, we ran the, we've completed our audit, and we ended last year in a net income of over four hundred thousand, when we, when we were anticipating major deficits beginning last fiscal year into this fiscal year. So in short, I would say that based on the net income that we generated from fiscal year twenty twenty-four, we were able to put in, into the, into the cash reserves over four hundred thousand dollars. So from a budgeting perspective, the one hundred and sixty-five cash outlet is not going to hurt us, certainly not get anywhere near depleting our reserves before we lower levels.
Okay. And the anticipated reimbursement would be, what month would you, would we be expecting to get the money back from program?
Those are some of the things we don't have control over. Just, I think just this week, we're submitting a reimbursement for a project that we spent money last year. So it's been, and one project, it's been twelve months. We do not anticipate waiting twelve months before we submit a request for reimbursement.
That's what I needed to know. Are there other questions from council? None? Madam Clerk, can you call the roll on this, please?
Ms. McKenney?
Yes.
Ms. Poppy?
Yes.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Niesel?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And that's gonna take us to item number fourteen next, which is authorizing the city manager to execute contracts for the Greenbelt Aquatic and Fitness Center indoor pool repairs. So in the council packet, proposals from C.A. Lindman Incorporated and Charles P. Johnson Associates, the packet is there, the proposals are there, the city manager, you're going to introduce this matter. And Mr. Kim, we appreciate that you're here now. If you'd like to come up to the podium, that'd be great. Mr. Somer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two contracts before you for completion of the work. One is for the engineering construction services by Lindman, and the rest are engineering and quality assurance services by CPJ, who is also our engineer record for the city. And Mr. Kim is here to get into any level of detail that you want to on the contracts and the scope of work.
Hey, welcome, Mr. Kim.
Thank you.
Just wanna give a real quick overview or summary of the contracts.
Sure. Again, this is for the remediation of the indoor pool deck. Several, I guess, over a year ago, we noticed some degradation in the structural steel, I mean, structural hollow core planks where the tiles sit on top of the concrete deck. We understood that there was water penetration through that entire area. So it's basically remediating about three thousand square foot of the indoor deck, as well as MEP structural shoring as well.
Thank you. Specific questions from council on any of the contracts? Okay, we do.
No, I was just gonna. Thought I was something, Ms. Poppy, saying that. Just gonna move that we authorize the city manager execute contracts for engineering services from C.A. Lindman Incorporated for a total of one million, three hundred sixty thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars, along with third-party engineering quality assurance services from CPJ for one hundred eleven thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Oh, thank you. I'll second that. If there's no further discussion, do you have a comment? Mr. Orleans, you have a comment?
In looking for what I have come to expect would be a standard stipulation in all vendor contracts, while I could not find it, I found some other interesting details, beginning with. With the fact that the principal, I don't know how many individual workers there will be doing this project, but the principal is receiving straight time payment of a hundred eighty-five dollars an hour, the project manager, a hundred and twenty, the superintendent, ninety-eight, I don't know if the superintendent equates to the foreman, no, the site superintendent foreman, eighty, restoration technician, seventy-five, warehouse trucking, fifty-eight, clerk, forty. Are all these titles going to be working on this project, Mr. Kim? How many actual workers will be doing the work? That's my question.
Mr. Mayor, I.
Question to the city manager.
Yes, I think that will be outside of the scope of the, of the presentation tonight. We can certainly keep count of many people that come into the, to the site. But if the, if the essence of your question, Mr. Orleans, is whether these individuals are gonna work on our, on a project. Yes, the proposal is that all of these individuals have a role in delivering the project. Delivering the project constitutes several different elements. One is the folks that will actually, actually be on the construction site doing the work. And then there's folks like warehousing and trucking. Those are individuals delivering material. And the clerk will be preparing invoices and any other reports submitted to us. So yes, all these folks are expected to contribute to the delivery of the project in different ways.
City manager, in the paragraph, "paid working conditions," it states that it's all going to be performed without union association. It does not say, it says no applicable minimum wage scale in parentheses for publicly funded permits or union-linked projects is included in this proposal. And I only was skimming this very quickly as of a minute ago. There is no provision for what the wages will be for the people who are actually doing the work. It's a non-union project. The principal is going to be getting three times as, almost as three times as much as one, as the lowest paid worker in their category of labor rates. It would seem to me that if this is the only outfit that's available to do it, that's one thing. If it's not, that's another thing. But even if it is the only outfit available to do it, they should adhere at least to the, what I have come to expect would be a stipulation in all our contracts, that they would pay a livable wage. And there, in fact, there's no suggestion here that they are. They emphasize that they're in, and that there is no applicable Davis Bacon rate applied to them because it's not a federal project. And they emphasize further that, well, I made my point. I've asked my question. Can this be answered?
Thank you so much. City manager, would you like?
Yes. Per councils, per council resolution on meeting the Living Wage Act of Maryland, we require our contractors to meet both the state law and our local laws, which council has passed. We're not, after, after the contract's approved, we will have the contractor sign a, a document that we've created, an affidavit that the contractor will adhere to both council's resolution on the living wage and the state's living wage law. So we do make those requirements of our contractors. Both our ordinance and state law is very specific about the floor amount, and that the floor amount is fifty thousand. So every contract above fifty thousand must meet our local law requirements of paying minimum, I'm sorry, paying a living wage.
No, thank you, thank you.
CPJ does provide an estimate for their, for their labor hours.
Okay, thank you very much. So at this time, if there's no further questions from council or online, let's go ahead. And Madam Clerk, can you call the vote, please?
Ms. McKenney?
Yes.
Ms. Poppy?
Yes.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Niesel?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kim.
Thank you.
Well, that about wraps it up, except there is the additional agenda item. Mayor Potem?
Do we want to do council activities first? I assumed the additional agenda item was at the very end.
That's fine. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, here's the council activities since last regular meeting. If anybody wants to mention anything in particular. Not, we can just add them to the, add them to the minutes.
I mean, people can read it up. There's so much stuff. I mean, that was the whole reason that we're not reading it all the time. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Just offering, if anybody wanted to comment on anything. And so then the, the last thing that I just wanted to propose was that, I mean, we talked a little bit about the community pledge earlier. I just think, and I, and I just, just out of curiosity, look up some history, because I wasn't personally sure how long ago the community pledge had been drafted. And it went back farther than I expected. I guess it was originally drafted by the Community Relations Advisory Board in nineteen ninety-seven and adopted by council in nineteen ninety-seven. It got revised in two thousand and one, and then revised again in two thousand and seven, looking to make it more inclusive. So the current version, twenty, sorry, twenty seventeen, the current version was adopted on November twenty-sixth of twenty eighteen. I mean, we already have it on the city website, and it's listed on the top of the city information and events page in the Greenbelt News Review. And so I just think it would be a, a powerful statement to include it as part of something, as something that we make a statement of after the Pledge of Allegiance at every meeting. So I would like to move that we add, that we add in addition to, in the, in the item that is the meditation and the Pledge of Allegiance, that we also recite the, the community pledge at the beginning of every regular meeting.
Second that.
Okay, now, if we do it that way, we would have to update the council rules. I believe the, the order of the meeting is actually there. So I think it's a powerful thing. I think we do refer to the community pledge quite often. So we can certainly do that, but we would have to amend the council rules, I believe.
Well, and I think we're looking at doing some other amendments to the council rules anyway. I just think that the reason to do it now and not wait until we go through that process is, as we heard from many of our residents during the petitions section, people are concerned, people are worried. And I think, wow, this is, I admit, you know, mostly a symbolic act. I think symbolic acts can be important. So, so I recognize that this would be a change to the standing rules. I think perhaps it can be something to just add it, and maybe it doesn't formally add it, just until we, to the standing rules, until we change, we go through some of the other changes we discussed last week and actually go through that process. But I mean, if it needs to be that I just add it to the agenda every regular meeting until we have been the standing rules, I'm okay to do that.
Don't need to do that, no.
I just, I think now is the time to make a, to make this as, as an important symbolic gesture. We didn't do a proclamation similar to College Parks. This is at least something.
And that's why I actually let off of the, which was my intention anyhow.
But I think it should be every, I think it should be every meeting.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's been talked about. We can certainly vote to do that. But we will have to go back and add it to the standing rules. So all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. Well, I don't really see anything else on this agenda. Oh, it's, it's about two minutes till ten. City Manager Somerone, you were saying something about two and a half, I believe.
You made it. You got it. It happened.
Okay. Well, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. This is not, it's not for discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.